They sent me one that's like.
I show six o'clock, so we're going to call to order the regular meeting of the Charter Township of Garfield Board. We'll start with a pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Anne, can you take a roll for us, please?
Schmuckel.
Here.
Corn.
Here.
Lapp.
Here.
Agustinelli.
Here.
McCumber.
Here.
Laney McManus.
Here.
And Joe McManus.
Here, thank you. First item on our agenda this evening is public comment. We have public comment at the beginning and at the end of each meeting. So at this time, we'll open up our first public comment, and anybody who likes to address the board, now's the time to come up and let us know what you have to say.
Thank you, Mr. McManus. Thank you, members of the board. My name is Noah Carburg. I'm the new County Department of Public Works Director. I really just wanted to take the opportunity to introduce myself. I've met many of you already. I wanted to thank Joe, I'm sorry, Mr. McManus and Mr. Barsha for their warm, welcoming posture. I'm looking forward to just working with and for both of you. Other than that, you know, I'm coming into the position well aware of the role that Garfield Township plays in the department's build backs, the extent of their infrastructure, and quite frankly, I think the time and attention that your township demands and deserves. I'm also a former resident or a former property owner of Garfield Township. I had the sense to buy a place around 2009 when I left Michigan, but I didn't have the sense to hold on to it, and I'm paying for that now. But I look forward to working with each of you, being a resource for you, both as a county employee and a member of the community. I'll be hanging around for the meeting, and you should be seeing me fairly frequently. So, thank you.
Welcome.
Thanks, Noah. And you'll learn Joe's fine. All right. Anybody else have any public comments this evening? Seeing nobody else running forward, we'll close public comment and move on to review and approval of the agenda. And if anybody has any conflicts of interest, now would be the time to state those.
I'll make a motion. We approve the agenda as presented.
I'll second that motion.
Motion made and supported to approve the agenda as presented. Any further discussion on that motion? Hearing none, all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye opposed. Motion carried. Consent calendar.
The purpose of the consent calendar is to expedite business by grouping non-controversial items together to be dealt with in one board motion without discussion. Any member of the board, staff, or the public may ask that any item on the consent calendar be removed therefrom and placed elsewhere on the agenda for full discussion. Such requests will be automatically respected. If any item is not removed from the consent calendar, the action noted in parentheses on the agenda is approved by a single board action adopting the consent calendar. This evening you have minutes, May 13th, 2025, recommend approval. Bills from the general fund, $61,923.25, recommend approval. Gordy Frazier, developers, escrow funds, stormwater reviews, utility plan review, oversight, and closeout, $2,461.25. General, $3,395. And park funds, DNR trust funds, $700. For a total of $6,556.25, recommend approval. Consideration of Fairfield Hotel water main extension, closeout, and turnover documents, recommend approval. And consideration of nominating Lori Lapp to serve a three-year term on the Joint Recreational Authority Commission, recommend approval.
Thank you. Are there any items that the, anybody on the board would like to have removed and placed elsewhere on the agenda? Any items staff would like to have removed? Any items anybody in the public would like to have removed and placed elsewhere on the agenda? Hearing none. Anne, could you have a roll on that, please? Oh, I'm sorry. I do that every time. I would entertain a motion to approve the consent calendar.
I make a motion that we approve the consent calendar.
And I'll second that motion.
Thank you. All right. Now that we have a motion and a support, any further discussion on that motion? Anne, now, can we have a roll?
Schmuckel.
Yes.
Corn.
Yes.
Agustinelli.
Yes.
Laney McManus.
Yes.
Lapp.
Yes.
McCumber.
Yes.
And Joe McManus.
Yes, thank you. All right. Correspondence in your packet, I see the Grand Traverse County Road Commission report in there. I don't know if you want to talk to that at all, Chris, or not.
I periodically get copies of those from the Road Commission. Those are also provided to the County Board as well. So as I receive them, I'll just be putting them in our packets in the future in correspondence.
Nice, thank you.
Thank you. All right, we're going to move on to reports. Our engineer is running a little late. She's stuck in traffic. The engineering report is in your, I don't think it was on you. I have one in my spot tonight. She will be here a little while, presenting under another topic on the agenda. So if you have any questions on the engineering report, you could ask her that when she gets here. So she should be here hopefully not too much longer. So, all right, next is our county commissioner's report.
Good evening. Lauren Flynn, District Two.
Hi, Fern Spence, District Four.
I only have a couple things to go over. Last, two weeks ago, we met with the city and had a joint study session and discussed kind of what our downtown campus can look like, will look like, our partnership there. We've already planned on building a new jail, but we don't know where yet. So all that's kind of conversation is starting to have. And with that, we did also approve the EOC 911 Center to move forward into design and development. We did pause on the facilities building just for a short four weeks, just as we were discussing maybe moving all our offices to the Franger Campus. Do we need to make that bigger than we already had it planned right now? We also passed a septic ordinance. So thank you to Mike Leahy over at the Health Department and their team. They did a lot of work to get that from point A to point B, and it took a while. But we have it, and it's there, and that will go into effect January 1st. Today, I had a meeting with the opioid and cannabis spending plan ad hoc. I'm happy to say that we do have a plan to bring forward to the full board to get those dollars out to the community to help those in need and prevent future devastation, as I like to think of it. That's all I have.
That's what I had on my list as well. We're currently updating our active study session spreadsheet, which is good. There'll be a schedule that we can refer to so that we're sharp and we address a lot of the area needs of, needs of the county. Today, I did participate in a TCAPS-sponsored Safe Routes to School audit along Frankie Road, which we're all responsible for. And it was interesting. I saw a lot of families and a lot of individual students crossing Frankie Road, yes, on what is the city's property, but also Garfield Township's property and boundary. There were a lot of students walking along the Frankie Road corridor without crossing. I counted 20 families and students who crossed Frankie Road heading eastbound at 3:14, and westbound, there was a 12 students who crossed, or parents who crossed to go get their kids from the TCAPS Montessori School. I started this audit early at 2:30 so I could catch and capture the West Middle School students leaving school. And what I really, my, the take-home message here is that the traffic along Frankie Road drives very fast. It's a, they go 35, which is the posted speed limit. It'd be really nice if we could somehow work on getting flashers and reducing that speed to 25 miles an hour. I don't know if the township has any control or say in that, but I think for safety purposes, I think it'd be a good idea. And then, of course, it needs to be resurfaced or rebuilt, too. Thanks.
Any questions?
Tara Fern, on the Safe Routes to Schools, is there a proposal that the public school is doing, or they're just in the study part of it right now?
Yeah, they're in the audit phase of it, so it's multifaceted. And I can't tell you what the next phase is, but I know that on previous Zoom meetings, our planners have been in attendance with that.
Okay, thanks.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Next on the agenda is our MMR report.
Hello, Amy Fairchild, Operations Manager with MMR. Thank you for letting me switch to the second meeting. I can now attend everybody's meetings every month now. Each week, it goes somewhere. April actually slowed down just a teeny bit. We went from 390 calls to 349. So my crews are grateful for a little bit of the break as we're amping up here into summer. We are in our new building. We are Garfield Township Company now, our residence for our company now, 14,000 square feet. I can actually get a little bit of work done in my office now because they're not all sitting in there. And a couple of them have gotten lost, so we've drawn some maps for them. Still some more Phase Two that'll be starting in July. Also, the exterior will be painted here shortly, which will make it look so much better, let alone the lack of landscaping. We're excited to get that looking better. Couple of things that we're working on right now. Our accelerated paramedic class started May 12th. There are 10 students in there, seven of which are MMR employees. So we're excited to see how that goes. This class, instead of being 16 to 18 months, is 10 months. So these guys are in class three days a week and studying very hard. They're kind of walking around a little bit dazed right now, but they should get in the flow soon. We are participating in several different events throughout Garfield Township now that we've got, got the summer weather here. Also, we took possession of two new ambulances, both here in Garfield Township. So if you see 531 and 532 out and about, those are the new ones. They should still be sparkling just a little bit, but we're very excited. Also, I am excited to say for two months in a row now, we are fully staffed. I have, we are overstaffing now because of summer, because of Cherry Fest, because of all the things we are overstaffing, but it has been a four-year process to become fully staffed. So we're very excited for that. Unless you guys have any questions for me, that's all I have for you guys.
Any questions for me? Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Thanks, Amy.
Chris, Township Managers' Report.
All right. Supervisor and I recently attended a couple of meetings with the Road Commission, Road Audit Company, and other stakeholders regarding a safety audit on Cedar Run Road between Gray Road and Harris Road. And complaints and issues reported relating to Cedar Run and Gray Road prompted the study, and they picked the corridor between Harris and Gray. A crew went out, it was like last week, they spent roughly two days assessing traffic in the morning and in the evening, and then making a determination on if there needed to be some corrections. So today, we attended a meeting on their findings and what they're going to recommend to the Road Commission. They haven't authored, authored their final report yet, which will go to the Road Commission in a couple of weeks. But the initial findings were the age of the drivers being young and older were the ones involved in a lot of the crashes in those areas. Also, there was conversation about just the sheer amount of traffic and the quick decisions people have to make to pull out into the road attributed to crashes, and also the, the weather. They found that in the winter months, people would turn on to, for instance, Harris Road from Cedar Run and T-bone cars that are lined up at the intersection. So that's what they were looking at for crash data. They're, based on the data review and their onsite review, they're recommending that the Road Commission trim back vegetation to open up sightlines, to increase signaling signs. Also, consider if the areas weren't a traffic signal. That wasn't part of this audit, but then that's a separate thing that the Road Commission have to do. Or, everybody's favorite, consider roundabouts. First at, at Harris, and then maybe secondary at Gray Road. So the, the Road Commission will have to consider everything that is in this final report and come up with a plan to address the issues that are existing there. And that could take up to five years if you want to do a roundabout. So, we had discussed cost sharing road maintenance for Potter Road in the past with the Road Commission. That is being totally taken care of by the Road Commission. They are asking if this board would support cost sharing for repairing Barney Road. They have also approached Long Lake Township, who initially appears to be interested in the cost share, still has to go to their board. We're waiting on final figures, which I hope to have to you at our next meeting. And, you know, that road, I drove it recently, is, is not as rough as Potter, but getting right there. And my concern is I don't want us to, to just be fixing roads. I want to fix roads that are, are necessary and prioritized by the Road Commission. So this is a road that manager Watkins had told us that it's, it's second on the list. It was Potter and then Barney. And there's going to be others down the road that we're going to discuss to consider if we want a cost share. I attended an MTA manager superintendent meeting. It was a virtual meeting. There's about 25 different manager superintendents on the call, which is a good opportunity for myself to introduce myself and get to meet other, other managers around the state. And they have them quarterly roughly. Also, internal staff and trustee Schmuckel, we met last week with our engineer to discuss River East. There is a concept plan that came to this board probably roughly over a year ago, and there's just been some suggested changes to accommodate the growth that we're anticipating. For instance, way back when we approved this site plan that included a small parking lot, well, we feel like that parking lot will be way too small. It needs to be expanded. Well, that's just internal discussion. I felt like that needed to go in front of the Parks Board for review and their support before it comes back to our board. So we really sat down and we're trying to come up with a, a final site plan that the Parks Department can support and that this board can, and that we could actually move forward on timelines and stay on, on time. So I, I feel like it was a good meeting, and like I said, next meeting, you'll have an updated site plan and maybe an updated direction as well. And then last week, Supervisor Blondshine and myself met with the Silver Lake Improvement Association on their special assessment. I think it was Thursday, they did a survey of mill foil in Silver Lake, and that report came back, and the, the association felt like maybe it was missing some stuff, some data. So they're, they got back with the company who's, who's doing the survey to ask some questions. It appears that the mill foil has subsided over time and is a lot less than what it used to be. And for that reason, the association's going to give the company through June to reassess the cost to treat it, because we feel like it's going to be less than the $30,000 annually, based on the amount that's there. But we want to make sure. So month of June, to give us that figure, and then hold our public hearings in either July or August, or August, September, and set up that special assessment district for the next five years. That is all I have. I got some other things on the agenda to talk about, but as far as my report, any questions?
No questions for Chris? All right, thanks, Chris. Moving on to the Supervisor Report. Few things going on. We, at BPW, over the last couple of weeks, meetings, the, kind of long story, but the county's recommending the BPW be reduced from 11 members down to nine. And there's, there's, there seems to be a lot of support for that. And so the BPW Finance, I think I reported at the last meeting, voted to recommend that to the board. And the board did, in fact, vote to recommend that to the County Board, but we're kind of in a doom loop because we technically have an 11-member board. We have nine members right now. Because two expired, they didn't renew them in anticipation of going to a nine-member board, and had a couple of people missing. So even though we had an affirmative vote to recommend that to the county, it didn't have a quorum of an 11-member, 11-member board, so it didn't, the resolution didn't pass. However, I think, the county, I think we may still, if they have not already acted on that, they were, they were going to act on it whether the BPW gave them a recommendation or not. So we're kind of waiting. We're, but the message we're going to deliver to the County Board is either take us to nine, get it over with, or give us the two, two members back that we're missing because we can't get a quorum when we don't have enough members on the board. So we need that to happen quickly. So we're still waiting. I don't know if they acted on that or not. So with that, the, did intend the TC Tourism Annual Meeting a couple of weeks ago. Nice event, a lot of recognition there. Chris and I toured the Creekside and Stone Ridge developments over there. There's, there's some ongoing trail opportunities there, so we're looking for opportunities. We've come up with a couple of solutions. We're going to continue to, to work on that to get that resolved. We started meeting manager Barsha, myself, our Parks and Rec people, and the Sheriff's Lieutenant and deputies. We, we've kind of asked them to be on high alert, watching for any, any encampments or homeless that may migrate into the township with the closing of the pines. So we're going to be meeting monthly with them, and we're asking the public to, you know, hey, if you see any activity, any encamp, illegal encampments, we want to deal with them quickly so we don't let that get out of hand. So nothing really to report on that, other than the fact that we're meeting monthly with the Sheriff's Department to stay on top of that the best we can. And the last thing I had in this, in the next, with Metro Fire, we had our Metro Fire meeting at ACME last month, and we had it here today. I've asked the Metro Fire to come in maybe at our next meeting at 5:30 and do a, do a demonstration for the, for anybody in the staff here, but primarily the board here, of the new drone that they've purchased. It's really impressive, and I think you'd all enjoy a demonstration of that. So more to come, but very likely at our next meeting, we'll have a 5:30 drone demonstration in the parking lot, and then come up for the meeting at 6:00. So keep your fingers crossed, I can work that out. It's really, really an impressive piece of equipment. So, any questions for me?
One question.
Yeah.
Is there still a problem behind Lowe's with the encampment?
They're, they're working on that. I mean, we've met with Lowe's, and that's up to them to, to deal with that. If Lowe's doesn't deal with it, we'll, we'll get involved, but we're just waiting to see what the, what they're doing with it.
Thank you.
Thank you. Any other questions? Okay, now, we'll go ahead and move on to unfinished business. Consideration of amending the contract with Human Resources Partners. It's on page 33 in your packet.
Did we miss MMR's report?
No, she did it.
MMR went. We didn't, we didn't do Jennifer's.
Oh, Jennifer, I'm sorry, Jennifer. I'm sorry, I wrote that we missed one. I'm sorry.
Jennifer want to give her report now that she's here?
She's going to give it to the vet. Do you want to do Jennifer's now, or?
Jennifer, do you want to do yours now, or do you want to wait until you're on later? Do you have any?
It's up to you.
Okay. Well, I, I think we'll just wait. She's going to be up here talking about the fire hydrant ordinance. If anybody has any questions on a report, they can ask them at that time. If that's all right with you.
Thank you, sir.
Okay. All right. Again, consideration of amending the Human Resources Partners. Remember our last meeting, we're doing a wage study. We feel that it was time to do a wage study for the, the staff. And we also just talked about including trustees and elected officials as well, and as part of that study. I believe the contract just adds those in. So any, which one is up to speed on that? Chris, go ahead.
So we added two additional positions, supervisor and trustee, from the ones that were already approved. And so it just adds $425 for each position totaling, the total cost to $8,500. It's not changing any other parameters of the contract, just the, the cost for the added positions. We did meet with the group last week, or the, the company last week, had a positive conversation. We're excited to be working with them. And right now, our employees are assessing their own job duties or documenting them, and we'll be comparing them to our job descriptions that we have. And then we'll be connecting back with the company on June 16th to further the process of that review and going forward from there.
Yes.
Well, since our supervisor is part-time, don't you think we ought to do, I mean, you guys shouldn't feel threatened by this, but treasurer and clerk and?
Yeah.
That wasn't. They had those who were included.
They're included in here?
Right.
Okay.
It's been a while. Like, do anybody know how long it's been since we've done a wage study? I don't know.
It's been a while.
It's been quite a while.
So.
I'm not sure we ever hired anybody.
Good thing to do periodically, make sure we're, we're in, in line.
Hired anybody, but Jean and Chloe, and I, mostly Jean and Chloe, looked at wages throughout the state of Michigan, what, what other townships were paid, our size.
Yeah, but we never hired anybody to do it, so.
Yeah.
Good.
I think, you know, it surfaced when we, you know, had our accessory leave this year, that we want to make sure we're, we're compensating correctly, and it's a good thing to, to look at. So, all right. Do we have a, probably need a motion for that, or go ahead and?
Yeah, I'm just looking for a motion to approve the supervisor to assign the addendum to the original contract.
I make that motion.
Support.
Motion made and supported to authorize the supervisor to, to sign the amended contract with the Human Resources Partners in the amount of $8,500. Any further discussion on that motion? Anne, could I have a roll on that?
Schmuckel.
Yes.
Is that Agustinelli?
Yes.
Corn?
Yes.
McCumber?
Yes.
Lapp?
Yes.
Laney McManus?
Yes.
And Joe McManus.
Yes, thank you. All right. New business. Item A, consideration of revised investment policy, Resolution 2025-11-T. Is that you, Chloe?
Yep. So yearly, this policy by law is to be reviewed by the board. The treasurer does the investing on behalf of the township, but this is the board's chance to set the parameters around what the treasurer can or cannot invest in. I did attend a conference about two weeks ago, so I took an investing class. So I took a better look at our policy, and I made a couple little updates. Nothing major. I highlighted everything in yellow. The biggest update, let me find it on here, is going to be to the maximum maturities. Let me find the section. Basically, okay, sorry, Section 13, maximum maturities. I had, it originally had five years in this policy, and I think in 2022, I switched it to three years, because that's what I had learned at the time was the best. But I'd like to do a more of a weighted average of three years. That gives me a little bit more flexibility. So still not going beyond the five-year maximum maturity, but allowing me to, if I want to go a little bit outside three years, or, you know, it gives me a little more flexibility with the market. Other than that, there are not really any other changes in here. Did anyone have any questions for me about it? This will come before you annually, and we can look at it every year. Any questions?
That's good.
Okay, that's it.
I'd like to make a motion that we adopt Resolution 2025-11-T, adopting a revised investment policy.
I'll second that motion.
Motion made and supported to approve Resolution 2025-11-T. Any further discussion on that motion? I mean, it's a resolution. Anne, could we have a roll on that, please?
Schmuckel.
Yes.
Corn.
Yes.
McCumber?
Yes.
Lapp?
Yes.
Laney McManus?
Yes.
Agustinelli?
Yes.
And Joe McManus.
Yes, thank you. All right, new business. Item B, consideration of the MSHDA CDBG grant for Habitat for Humanity. Don't ask me to say that twice or three times fast. Letter of intent. So I'm not sure who's handling that. John is?
Good evening. John Syke, Planning Director for Garfield Township. So last week, we were approached by the Housing Commission regarding their project on the Franger Road. So the flats at Carriage Commons is part of the Housing Commission beta project that was approved back in 2022. And as you know, they're currently under construction for the flats, and going through their phased approach to the construction of 215 apartments at the location. Another part of that phase, of that project in that phase is 15 Habitat for Humanity homes. So they're kind of clustered in with those apartments. They'll share some of the same roadways, water, sewer lines, et cetera. The Housing Commission became aware that MISTHA has some community development block grant funds that would be able to be used for infrastructure. So for those utilities to serve those sites and prep them and allow for them to be constructed, including utilities, paving, sidewalks, et cetera, would be available and would, they would make application for a million-dollar CDBG grant. Now, to actually qualify for that, it would have to, they need a partner in that, and that would be a non-entitlement local unit of government. In this case, they've approached the township to make application to MISTHA. So we essentially, the township would function as kind of a, a pass-through entity. So there'd be block grant funds from MISTHA. So, there'd be block grant funds from Mishta, go through the township and be provided to the Housing Commission for the construction of that infrastructure. So, as part of the process, it starts as with a letter of intent and that's what's in your packet this evening for your consideration. And this would need to be submitted to Mishta by June 2nd, which is this coming Monday. So, that would be a letter of intent. Then, there'd be consultation between the township and the partners in case the Housing Commission, Habitat, to ensure that it's a project that would qualify. And then, there'd be an actual formal application process that would have to be pursued to go forward to actually obtain the funding from Mishta.
Go ahead, Molly.
On the letter of intent, it says it has to be in by April 17th. Is there a change in that?
Yeah. So, that was one of my things that flagged too. We did contact Tony Lenty at the Mishta last week and it's kind of a rolling deadline so that this form is still applicable for that. Perhaps, I don't know, the reason why, maybe they didn't get enough applicants through that first round. So, did make sure that it's just kind of a rolling application process so it would still be usable.
Okay, thanks.
All right. Lisa Corn, Deputy Director for Traverse City Housing. I wanted to give you guys an update, but also help put into context where this grant falls in and what its importance is to this project. I'm happy to say I'm here to spread all good news. That does not happen in housing very often, so I wanted to share all of that with you. Many of you have probably noticed the project is way ahead of time. We've been running consistently two to three months ahead of construction. We have a TCO for the clubhouse and lease-up has begun. We intend to have a lease-up by July. So, that's, that's good news. That's Phase One, which is 48 units of workforce housing. The second phase would be another 48 units. And that's why I have a smile on my face. We were the recipient of $4.6 million last week from Mishta to close our gap on Phase Two. We were awarded tax credits in the last round, pretty competitive round, and I'm really glad to say that they came up north to our project here in Garfield Township. So, we have a slight gap still to fill in Phase Two and that's why I'm here today to talk to you. I want to move forward to talk about Phase Three. Phase Two is being funded by 4%, which is bond funding for Lytec. We are looking at 9% Lytec for Phase Three, which is another 48 units, the final 48 units of the project. If we were to have this CDBG grant come through with the $1 million, that would completely close the small gap for Phase Two and it would make us competitive to be able to apply October 1st for the 9% Lytec credits. That would be huge for us because that means that next year, instead of going through and starting construction on Phase Two, which we already will be doing, thanks to that gap closure by Mishta, we would be able to finish the project and start that construction next year in 2026 for the final 96 units of the project and complete Phase Two and Three. The Habitat for Humanity homes are not part of this phased approach because we don't own them. That's part of Wendy's agency. However, we are partnering together and are providing the infrastructure on that. Those dollars of a million dollars with the CDBG grant would not only provide the infrastructure and road for Wendy's family's homes, but it would provide them for the daycare center as well, which we are actively in talks with a big agency in town that hopefully will be able to step in and fill those roles and put a pretty large daycare center there sooner rather than later, I hope. So, the CDBG grant kind of came up last minute. I, I probably agree with what John said and that's why we see a rolling deadline. I don't think there were a lot of applicants. Thankfully, we have a little angel down at Mishta in Lansing that let us know about this grant and the ability to partner with Garfield Township for that. It would really help us out to have this grant funding to make us competitive for the October 1st tax credit rounds. As you guys know, we already start several feet below in the hole, competing against downstate and larger urban areas for those tax credit awards from the state. To have this kind of funding lined up would mean a real difference for us to be able to get that done. Now, if for some reason this didn't happen, that's not the end for Phase Three. We would just continue through and apply again in April. But the CDBG money would really allow us to be competitive and push that through this year and start both phases at the same time. There's substantive cost savings for us to have the construction done both phases at one time, not to mention really messing everybody's lives up that lived there only once rather than twice, if any of you have lived in construction, like I think most of us have. So, that's why we're here today. We have Wendy Irving from Habitat for Humanity, who's happy to answer any questions about their 15 homes that they'll be having there as part of the project. But I am excited to say that next time we talk to you, we'll be talking about a ribbon cutting at the flats Phase One, which we anticipate very soon. So, that's great. And maybe then, two years from now, both of the other phases, a ribbon cutting at the same time. So, we appreciate your consideration and being our partner in this as we are unable to apply for these kind of funds. But it would be affecting all of our phases as well as, good news for Wendy's applicants as well. So, that's it. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Anybody have any questions for John or Lisa?
I have a quick question for Wendy. I think, does that then reduce the price of the house to the home buyer? So, if, if this grant is covering the utility and the road portion, does that, that's not again incurred by the home buyer, right?
Oh, the model of Habitat is that we serve each homeowner at 30% of their income towards housing. So, that's a different number. They're purchasing the home. Everybody has a mortgage.
Sure.
That's a different number for everyone, but the rule of thumb is 30% of their income goes towards housing. So, that's where we focus on. So, if it's a mortgage for $200,000 or $150,000, we focus on customizing that mortgage for them. So, essentially, it doesn't go to the bottom line, no. It helps us be sustainable as an organization and keep going forward. That's a, that's a pretty lofty cost for an organization like ours to undertake that would set us back a little bit. So, I think I concur with the comments earlier about the collaboration and the partnerships really helps us to continue on and be successful. Does that help you?
It does. Thank you, Wendy.
Any other questions?
I just want to make a comment that I really, really like your program. It's, it is truly a hand up and it gives people an opportunity to be homeowner, which is great.
Thank you. I appreciate you saying that. And I really appreciate everything that you have done to come this far in this project. We're coming in on the tail end, but wow, what a witness you have made, being able to take this to this stage. It's pretty phenomenal to see what you've accomplished together. So, I hope that we can take this next step. And like I said, we're coming in on the tail end and we're offering homeownership, as Chuck talked about. So, on behalf of our leadership and all the families that we intend to serve and that we have served, we thank you for your consideration.
Just while you're up there, do you have those houses already assigned to people or are you looking?
We don't intend to start our project until 2028, potentially earlier if we could, but that's really the goal right now. So, no, we don't actually have them selected. However, I will tell you that we just hosted an open house in Leland County and Boogai in 72 and we had about 75 individuals come out seeking homeownership. So, it wouldn't take us long to actually fill that opportunity. And if I may just share one story while I'm here, I always like to look at real-life situations when I do a presentation and there's always a front-page article or something to share. But today, I wanted to share something in regards to my visit that I had last Friday to a local doctor's office. And my doctor had a new nurse that came in and she was looking at my chart and needed to ask me a lot of questions. And the first thing she said was, "I see you work for Habitat. How do I get housing?" It's everywhere, right? Especially if you represent the industry, you can't avoid those conversations. So, it's really essential that we help people that are in the healthcare industry and those who are teaching our children in the schools. Those are the top two applicants that we receive. So, I don't feel like it's going to be difficult to find opportunity for them. Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Anybody else have any questions or comments? Okay. So, Chris, we're just looking for authorization for me to submit this and sign this?
So, if you look at the letter that John prepared, there's a suggested motion, some language, page 56.
I went past that already.
I do. I would like to make a motion that the letter of intent to the G, all right, I'm going to do this. CDBG funding for 15 new Habitat for Humanity homes in the Bay Area Transit Authority and Traverse City Housing Commission, transit-oriented mixed-use planned unit development be approved and forwarded to Mishta.
I'll second.
All right. Motion was made and supported to submit the funding application as stated. Any further discussion on that motion? Now, the only comment I would make is this is also an excellent site. Those, those building sites back in there, if you're not familiar with that particular development, location-wise and setting-wise, wooded, really some beautiful home sites back in there. So, whoever does get those homes is going to be lucky. So, all right. If there's no further discussion, all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried. Thank you. All right. Next item is consideration of a quote for mulch at the Silver Lake Recreation Area, page 62 in your packet.
Did we...
Chris, go ahead, Chris. Yeah, go ahead.
Supervisor friend in East Bay Township had organized through Superior Ground Cover to provide quotes for mulch for, for her parks. And she reached out to us, along with other townships. And at this point, East Bay, Long Lake and Peninsula Township have all committed to buy mulch from this, this organization for their parks or the playground systems. According to our park staff, you know, ideally, you want six inches of coverage for safety, but we still have mulch that was put down back in 2022. And there's enough of a base to where we could be just fine with four inches worth. So, at a cost of $8,800. Back in 2002, we used just regular mulch that you put in gardens, paid about $2,500, not including installation or the equipment needed to install it. So, it is a little bit more pricey, you know, we're three years later and, you know, I'm not a mulch expert, but apparently this is, in case you fall down, it's going to protect you a little bit more than just regular tree, you know, hardwood mulch or something like that. So, I'm just looking you to, looking for you to consider hiring the company to spread four inches of mulch in our Silver Lake Recreation Area Park by the play structure.
So, I'd make a motion that we enter into a contract, are we entering into a contract?
Yeah.
With Superior Ground Cover for four inches of mulch at the Silver Lake Recreation Area at a cost of $8,800.
Support.
Excuse me, motion made and supported to approve the spreading of the mulch at the playground. Am I missing something? Why am I, why does mine read differently? Is it, is that the right amount?
Yeah. That was the other, two years ago.
Oh, okay. That's why I missed it. All right, thank you. All right. Any further discussion on that motion? Ann, can we have a roll call on that, please?
Agustinelli?
Yes.
Was that McCumber who seconded?
Yes.
Okay. McCumber, yes. Lapp?
Yes.
Laney McManus?
Yes.
Corn?
Yes.
Schmuckel?
Yes.
And Joe McManus?
Yes, thank you. All right. Item D, consideration of hiring a summer intern for the Building and Parks Department. Who's handling that one? Chris, did you up or you didn't?
I might just forego my report and just talk about the agenda items.
Yeah.
Sorry, tired of hearing them from me. So, in your packet, I prepared a letter. We had a request for an intern to work with the township over the summer for roughly eight weeks. And we have done that in the past and our building official feels that they could use the support and also our Parks Department, it's their busiest time of the year, could use help in the parks. It would give this individual something to put, you know, put on their resume, working for a municipality. The individual's goal is to become a structural engineer, going through Davenport University and then to Michigan Tech for third and fourth year of college. And talking with the clerk, we feel comfortable offering that individual $18 an hour. We feel that that's a fair wage and that person would be able to start the minute we tell them. So, I would obviously just work with the clerk on HR end of things to see when it would be best for that to happen. And with the board's support, we will just move forward.
I'd like to make a motion that...
Molly had a question first.
Just a question, where's the money coming from for that?
Our budget, it's budgeted.
We have a line item for an intern that's at $5,000. This is going to put just a little bit over. We're going to have to do a small, like $760 over, I think would add.
Okay. Good. Thank you.
I make a motion that we hire an intern for the summer for, did you say eight weeks?
Eight weeks.
At the hourly range of $18 per hour.
I'll second that motion.
Motion made and supported to hire a summer intern for our Building and Parks Department for the eight weeks at $18 an hour. Any further discussion on that motion? All right. Hearing none, all in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried. Okay. Item E, discussion of inspection and maintenance of privately-owned fire hydrants. Jennifer, I think you're up. I'll start off. If anybody has any questions for Jennifer on her submitted engineering report, you'd ask her now if you'd like. If not, I'll just have her jump right into the hydrant report, so.
Yes, I think that was all handed out.
Yeah.
So, I appreciate that. No, Jennifer Graham, Gordy Frazier. Sorry, I was a little late. We have two seasons in Michigan, you know, as we all joke about, and it's construction or winter, so. I don't know which one I'd rather have. Just sit there. So, anyway, no, I appreciate you guys' understanding. So, yes, and as you guys all know, at any time, I'm open-door policy. So, if anybody has any questions on the report, but I routinely have had, made myself available in meetings with staff and township manager, township supervisor, just so that we're continuing, just to keep things moving ahead on projects. But to that effect, yes, private hydrants. And I do see, I double-checked, so you guys do have a copy of the original 2005 Ordinance 42 in your packet. For a little bit of background, of course, being your engineer and myself personally working on projects for you guys, yeah, over 20 years now. Wow. But as my role has continued to evolve and heading opportunity and being privy to development projects, stormwater reviews, private road reviews, working with DPW on some of their reviews, even though there isn't necessarily a water main or sewer main extension, which is usually what necessitates me to be involved, there may be a water service lead or I'm just doing stormwater reviews and all of a sudden, you know, there's a hydrant proposed. Or even just driving around, there's a new hydrant that just seems to magically have appeared on a site development that normally, under general circumstances, your engineer wouldn't be involved. And so, over time, we've continued to try to basically engage and improve our communication methods between Metro, DPW, just so that we're aware of when these instances are occurring. Because as you guys can see, there is an existing private hydrant ordinance, which thus allows a developer at any instance, if they need a hydrant, because Metro requires one, or they don't have a fire suppression system or based on their size or building code or occupancy, a hydrant's needed. They have had in the past the ability to install one on main. And, you know, it's been fine. We haven't, and I preface with saying, we haven't had instances where it's actually created a water contamination issue or breakage on existing infrastructure. But as you guys can appreciate, anytime, you know, to install a hydrant like that or even do a water lead, they have to physically expose our existing infrastructure, our existing main that you guys own and contract with the county to operate. They have to expose it, excavate down and in some form or fashion connect to that, which poses a risk for us and the rest of your customers and risk just to the infrastructure itself, whether if someone isn't there witnessing it, you know, to make sure what they are connecting to, they're using materials that comply with our standards and specs and they're performing proper testing procedures. We don't have cross-connections, you know, things like that. So, it's always something that we're on high alert on and it is concerning when we're driving around and our DPW will call and there's a new hydrant that all of a sudden[1778.58] call, and there's a new hydrant that all of a sudden is there. So we have improved our communication to make sure, and I've talked to Brian Belcher specifically, that him and I communicate with each other when I'm doing a stormwater review, same thing when he's doing a fire review, or the use has changed and there's a new, you know, minor amendment proposed that warrants another hydrant. He has done a great job of communicating and making me aware, so that at least if anything, we know the hydrant's there, we can log it into our system, because that's the other important piece of this, is we want to make sure that we have an inventory of these hydrants. Because they are, the fire department has a purpose for them, but as do we. We use them for blow offs and for maintenance of the water main system just in general, where they're using them for fire suppression surfaces. So they do have dual, yeah, dual purposes. So as you guys can see where I'm going with this, it's a lot of coordination and cat herding. And just over the years, through discussions, and finally with DPW and Metro, we, we asked ourselves, why do we actually have this ordinance? Do we need to do this? Do we need to continue to advocate to allow developers the ability to install private hydrants? And ultimately, the decision was is no, because what happens, if you read through the ordinance, the private property owner, they install one, they still have to install it per your standards, or they're supposed to, and they're also supposed to inspect them annually and perform maintenance and operation. And if they're not doing it, the DPW's still going in and performing that procedure on that behalf and charging a nominal fee to do that. So there are still efforts, there are still times where the DPW's getting involved. And oftentimes, I'd say 50% of these private hydrants aren't, they're having deferred maintenance, and the DPW's having to go in and perform them. And when they do get there, they're leaking and, and disrepair. So again, full circle, why, why do we have this? And so our first, you know, I had discussions with the manager, the supervisor, and as I had noted with Metro and DPW. And so I think that group was in concurrence, that the next step was to bring it to this board, because it is your ordinance, and have that discussion on the ability, because it would be ultimately all of our recommendation as your technical resources to rescind that ordinance and enforce that all hydrants moving ahead do meet the public standard requirement. And so with that process, we would have to do a review. It doesn't require an Eagle permit, keeping that in mind, because it's not providing an actual domestic service. But we would have to review plans, we would need an easement, we would have to have inspection and a witness report, and that would be a collaborative effort with us and the DPW to ensure that policy is followed. But then we would have a good inventory on those. And that would be our recommendation. To date, just for reference, in case someone asks, we currently have in our system for private hydrants that we have documented, 89 of them. And so when they do go in, part of the effort that I've been doing to help and assist DPW to keep track of them is when we do see them, we do assign a number still to them, so that at least we do have them acknowledged in our system and know where they are. Because we have had a couple even recently go in, because the ordinance is still there and valid. Because there are times where a developer doesn't want to go through all those extra steps through us, through review, and just need a fire line. Or, for example, the mall. You know, there's private water main that surrounds the mall, and that is an antiquated past practice that was allowed. And that also to itself, through discussions with DPW, is something that we're continuing to work through when a developer comes in. We're encouraging everyone to install public water main too, because they're still having to pay the connection fees. You know, there's no considerations and concessions made if they install it privately. Everything still has to comply with their standards, or your standards and specs. So, but with that being said, that's, it's really a discussion topic. I, I don't know, Mr. Supervisor, what your thoughts are further, but I guess my point tonight was, yeah, to be available to answer any questions, and really ultimately to encourage you guys to consider rescinding that ordinance at some point. And then with the existing ones in the system, talking with DPW staff, as I had noted, they're already going in for the ones that aren't being maintained and taking them over and inspecting them. So they're okay and comfortable, what they've relayed to me verbally, to take on those existing 89 ones and incorporate them and make them public into the system as part of their duties and responsibilities.
And this, I mean, this would be put on the agenda sooner rather than later. And we've had a lot of discussion about this. And for me, it kind of boils down to a couple of different things. It's really, it's public safety. Ultimately, it's public safety, both clean drinking water. You know, we, we have people, you know, tapping into lines, and if we're doing it as a private line, we don't have anybody inspecting it or watching them do it. And not that there's anything going wrong there, but the potential. But ultimately, to me, it boiled down to three things. When there's a fire hydrant out there, this may sound a little bit silly, but I mean, the, the fire department needs to know where it's at, okay? They need to know that it, you know, that it was, you know, safely and sanitarily installed from BPW's standpoint, and that it works. You know, the worst-case scenario would be a situation like they had in California last year, where it's a big fire, and they open up a fire hydrant and nothing comes out. We don't want to put ourselves in that situation. So if we have the BPW taking those over and monitoring them and inspecting them, we, we can ensure that that's been done properly. So it just, it, the, the benefits of getting rid of the ordinance far outweighed keeping the ordinance there. We're not asking, we're not putting any undue burden on anybody. We're just, we're just going to now require they follow the same rules as everybody else installing hydrants, if we, if we move forward to eliminate this ordinance.
In order to eliminate the ordinance, we have to have a public hearing?
Yeah, I know we can't do it.
I mean.
Yeah.
We could start, make a motion at this point to start that process?
Yes, we're just discussing, I want to, you know, give the board, and, you know, a chance to, I think we've, you know, I don't know that it's come up yet at a board level, but, not in Garfield Township, but, but locally here, there has been private hydrants that froze up and didn't work when they were needed in other municipalities around the area. So it's a real concern for, for, you know, both Fire Board and BPW, I think both agreed that it's the right thing to do. Yeah, Molly?
So if we eliminate this ordinance, will we need to come up with something else that says that they, people are required to do these things?
Well, it's already addressed in your, your water use ordinance and your design guidelines and technical specs that, you know, infrastructure that's installed is public. This ordinance has just allowed some flexibility for developers to basically have a choice. So when they've approached me and they have a domestic line, which is usually, you know, a one or two-inch, and then they're proposing a six-inch line to, say, loop around a hotel, that's a lot of times where we see it, they've had the ability just to install it privately. And so with, through your standard specs and guidelines, the elimination of this ordinance, it has to be installed publicly. This doesn't give them that option anymore, if, if that helps answer your question. So we wouldn't have to change anything with your current requirements.
You're feeling like we're covered?
Correct.
As far as safety goes. And so the person who watches them or inspects them, is that going through our building department? That's going through you?
That would go through your, your engineer of record and then the DPW, both collaboratively. Yep.
Can we set this for a public hearing next meeting?
Chris?
Talking with Karen in past practice, it doesn't sound like you need a public hearing. You just need to notify the public, and then you need to create an ordinance to basically cancel this one out.
Which requires a public hearing.
While we go ahead and schedule.
I asked her specifically then, she, yeah, maybe she just.
It requires a public.
Just to be safe, why don't we just schedule for a public hearing and draft the new ordinance in the meantime? So I, I don't think there's any problem with doing that. Do we have time to schedule at the next meeting? Notification time enough?
It's not zoning, so you don't need 15 days.
Okay. I believe our next meeting will be June 10th? So entertain a motion?
I'll make a motion to begin the proceedings to eliminate the private ownership of fire hydrants.
Second.
Motion made and supported to eliminate the private fire hydrant ordinance, not, excuse me, to schedule a public hearing on eliminating that ordinance on our June 10th, 2025 meeting. Any further discussion on that motion? Hearing none. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried. Thank you. Okay.
Thank you. I appreciate it very much.
Thanks, Jennifer. All right, for the benefit of the public here, our, our next item agenda is we're going to be reviewing the performance of our township manager, and he's been here surprisingly six months already. And at his request, we're going to be going into pri, into closed session to discuss. Anytime we discuss performance of an employee, they have the option to request a, a closed session. So I just want to let you all know, we're going to be, we're going to be, I'm assuming, going into closed session and be going into an adjacent room. So I don't know if anybody wants to stick around. Yes?
If we have students here that need something signed before we go into closed session, you may bring that up before we go in.
I already signed the one.
You already signed the one? Okay.
I could do that. Yeah, you don't have to wait around. So we will be coming back after our closed session and for our last public comment and.
We can have a public comment before we go into closed.
Okay, yeah, we could do that.
That was me texting you.
So.
Well, I saw you looking around.
Before we make the, before we make the motion to go and do closed session, I will open up public comment. So if anybody doesn't want to stay around and wants to make public comment, I will open up public comment at this time. Anybody, anybody like to come forward and make any comments to the board? Now's your chance to do that. Okay, so, no? You sure? Okay. Seeing no other public comment, I'm going ahead and close the second public comment. And in your packet, there is a suggested motion. Do you guys have, somebody have that? Would you like me to read that?
I didn't see that.
There's a, the motion to go into closed session pursuant of, to 15.268, Section 81A of the Open Meetings Act, to discuss the township manager's evaluation.
So moved.
I support.
Motion made and supported, based on the criteria I just read, to go into closed session to discuss our manager's performance. Any further discussion on that motion? Hearing none. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Has to be a roll call.
Oh, I'm sorry. You're right. Ian, roll calling out. You're right. Thank you, John. Chuck?
Augustinelli.
Oh, Augustinelli.
Yes.
Schmuckle?
Yes.
Corn?
Yes.
McCumber?
Yes.
Lap?
Yes.
Laney McManus?
Yes.
And Joe McManus?
Yes. Okay, so we're going to go to closed session, so.